This time I will call the York County Council Fiscal Year Budget Workshop for 2024-25 for April 16th, 2024 to order. We have got a lot of pieces of paper in front of us that we are trying to look at. We got a couple more extra pieces of paper that are coming to us as well. It looks as if our first order of business is Presentation from Local Jurisdictions Regarding Recreation Funding. If there's anyone here who wishes to speak on that, you're more than welcome to come forward. If you'll give your name and your address before you start speaking, we would appreciate that.
Thank you. My name is Joey Bluthen. I'm at 305 Gulfview Crest Drive, TK, South Carolina. I'd like to thank you, all of you, for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the members of the Municipal Recreation Association of York County. We encompass all the municipalities within the city. And I spoke in front of you last year and as part of our group, what we shared with you last year, we took you through kind of the history of the recreation tax and then shared with you kind of the programming that we, the programming, the facilities, all the things that we support through York County. And tonight, kind of want to move past that since this is all the same group and kind of talk about future planning moving forward. One of the directions from this council was we would like a formula that's consistent, that can be used every year. And before you tonight is, as a group, what we met with and would like to provide y'all. So, a few highlights with the formula that was before you tonight and what was emailed to all of you last night is, we envision this continuing to be a 1.5 mil tax that's assessed to the unincorporated residents. I believe Mr. Madden's proposal of .9 to all county residents would kind of eliminate the core principle of why the tax was created in the first place, which was to help the municipalities supplement recreation spending as they supported the unincorporated residents participating in their programs, since the county did not have their own recreation program. So, this proposal has the 1.5 mil. It was brought to my attention that the total balance of 1.687500 may be inaccurate because that was based off of the .9 mil. I think what's important to understand is not necessarily the dollar figures, but the percentages. And as we get into that, how we base off of this funding model is we took the unincorporated populations of each area and it's broken out into the percentages of the funding. Because as a group, we believe that where the unincorporated funds are generated, those are the areas where it should be supported. And you'll see that in the formula. The important thing that we believe is that this formula should be updated every two years as the census figures come in to allow for flexibility so that if growth is happening in other areas of the county, that accounts for that. So, every year, we're not coming having the same different conversations. This can continue to be used as the county grows. The association as a whole recommended this, but we believe an important part of that path moving forward is that with the county operating Field Day Park, we believe that county staff should have representation as part of our association as well and would recommend the Parks and Recreation Director Catherine Jones to be a part of that and serve as kind of a liaison for the community of Lake Wally as well, because we understand that they're a part of this as well. And I think it would be important through county staff having that representation as well. I think the last thing that I'd like to reiterate to this group, and I'd be happy to take any questions with it, is that we have valued the county's participation in partnership in supporting recreation throughout the county. I think this has been a huge success for everyone in the county. And what we're asking of you is just a continued partnership in that endeavor to support everyone in York County. So with that, I'll kind of turn it over to this group to see if there's any questions about the proposal in front of you.
Thanks, sir. Can I get some commentary back from staff on, it looks like the numbers that they used were based on the countywide number? What is the total amount that's available for distribution currently?
The biggest difference between these two and then why there's a small delta, and it's a small delta, and I think Joey's spot on, it's the formulas that should be focused on. Because you have to levy millage in tenths and the math didn't work precise and it was like, I think, a .88 or .87, so we rounded up to the .9.
I can barely hear you, Kevin.
I barely hear that. There's just, there's a little more money because, again, because you have to levy millage in the, in tenths. We had, we rounded up to .9, so there was a little bit more money in the countywide allocation of .9 mils countywide compared to the 1.9 in the unincorporated area. It's really an insignificant difference. And again, I agree with Joey's comments. My thoughts, council should be focused on the formulas that, the different sets of formulas that are before you. I wouldn't worry about the dollar amounts. I think Joey concurs with that.
I agree with that, but I would like to know what is the projected amount for the one and a half mils that's currently the unincorporated population?
It's going to be somewhere.
And I was asked this question. The spreadsheet that looks like this, that's the one from the municipalities. So, what's the total amount of distribution that county is projecting?
Let me see, one of the maps. Before council, there are four maps that were handed out. Okay, the .9 is 1,650,000. And this would be the distribution based off of population. There's another map that shows the 1.25 where the revenue is generated. So, this is the distribution, and this will tie back to the distribution that was recommended before with the one based on population, .9 distribution. So, this is the distribution of .9. And I usually tie it closer, for example, when 96,000 drops to 94,000. Again, that's because of the small delta between the two.
So, just for purposes of education for folks who are listening, the tax that currently is implemented is only assessed on the unincorporated areas. And as I understand it, from what staff has presented to us, that the total amount that they project is subject to distribution is 1.65 million. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And so, the municipalities have presented a proposal that has 1.687, but that was based on some different information. But the 1.650 is the amount that we anticipate being the one and a half mils that's assessed on the unincorporated areas. Because as it stands right now, the current tax is only assessed on the unincorporated areas and the projected amount is 1.65. Is that right? I just want to make sure we're on the same page. Okay. I do, I have a couple of questions, but I'm happy to, my first questions are, the proposal that you all have submitted from the municipalities, you've identified an unincorporated population. And so, you've tried to identify only the unincorporated population as part of that? This is not total population?
That is correct, because it kind of goes back to our original statement, or my original statement, that we believe that where the revenue is generated should stay within that area. So, you know, probably the most fair and equitable way to divide it out. The consensus that we reach as a group.
Any other questions before we open it up?
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Awesome. Thank you.
We received this information and I will tell you, I mean, if you can't tell already, we're working on a skeleton crew here tonight. We've got three of our council members who are missing here tonight, but I think the purpose of this is to make sure that we get as much information as possible for the council to understand the different positions that are there. So, if there's anyone else who wishes to come forward and speak, as to the recreation funding, you're more than welcome to come forward and speak.
Good evening. Madam Chairperson and council members, I'm John Tyler. I'm with the City of Rock Hill. Fully endorse what Joey just said. The one thing I would just like to make sure that all councils remember is this tax was levied across the whole unincorporated areas of the county. And therefore, when he's saying that it's used in the area, what he's meaning is used across the county to fund everybody. And that's why we went to the unincorporated population of each district, school district in the county. Is that?
That's right.
Just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on the recreation matter? Any other questions from council? All right. We have another item on the agenda. If there's nobody that has any other questions for gathering the information, I'm going to move forward with the second.
This is just solely on what staff recommended, right?
So, let's just be clear. We've gotten several maps here tonight that are different, and I think some of this is going to take some digestion from council to get this information. And I would ask that management make sure that you send this in a digestible way to the council members who are not here to be able to understand what's at stake. So, here's what I understand, and y'all correct me if I'm wrong. The proposal that is in this spreadsheet is from the municipalities. And that needs a little bit of correction because the number was based on a different number, but it's fairly small, $37,500. That is what the municipalities collectively proposed for council to consider. Then we have the management's proposal, which was submitted at our prior meeting. And that is this, this paper along with this map, just so that we're all on the same page. Do we have any other questions before we move on?
And just one thing I would add, Madam Chair. This is all about giving y'all all the information you need to make the decision. So, the theme of tonight is gathering information so that you can inform the budget as we move forward towards that finalization. So, we're collecting information tonight. We're hearing from folks. You're also receiving information from us. And so, these are just, this is information to help you make a decision later in the process. You don't have to make any decisions tonight, but we're just providing information so you can be ready to make that decision as we continue to move forward in the budget process.
Thank you, Josh. And I neglected to do something. I forgot to introduce our new county manager, Josh Edwards, who's speaking here tonight. We are very excited to have him here tonight. This is his first budget workshop. We've had a workshop, we've had a council meeting, and now we've had a budget workshop, all in the span of seven days. So, we are putting him under fire quickly and fast, and we're very impressed with the work that he's doing. But, yeah, I think the purpose of what we have here tonight, because we have not even had first reading on the budget, is for folks to present information to council for us to consider as we make our decisions going forward. So, if there's anyone else who wants to make any comments or about the recreation funding, I invite you to do that now. Otherwise, we're going to move on to the next item, which is the fire budgets. Going once, going twice?
Now, when he said this was based on the general, was that general population overall? Did number of kids come into factor in certain areas or?
I've been studying this, because we've been doing this for a good long while. So, you correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Madden.
Are you talking about the .9 millage, Tommy?
Yeah.
That is total population. Total population was considered.
Not just the incorporated, it's total population in those areas. All right. Good. All right. We're going to move now to discussion regarding fire budgets. Is there anything that management wants to present before we open it up for discussion?
So, staff has provided y'all in front of you with potential, you know, recommended budgets.
Your mic's not working very good.
Okay, let me get closer. All right. So, we just want y'all to know that staff's provided the budgets for you where they're at today. And so, we're happy to answer questions, but tonight, our goal is really, you know, to allow the fire districts to share their feedback. We've had initial discussions with them, and obviously, we're open to more discussions. But this was an opportunity for them to come and share their thoughts. But y'all have in front of you, you know, where we're at as of today, just like they have received that from our staff.
Is there certain documents we need to be looking at when we're paying attention to this issue? We've got a whole stack of documents in front of us.
So, in the third agenda item, y'all are going to hear real quick from staff a little bit about this at a very high level. So, there's a slide in the presentation, the third agenda item. I think that in terms of what you have in front of you, you know, it's just extra information if y'all have questions, but that level of detail isn't needed for tonight. It's really for the future as you continue to consider where we go from here.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
So, I guess what I'll do is if there's anyone who wants to speak in regards to the fire budget issue, you're more than welcome to come forward. If you'll please state your name and address before you do that. We do have, we've just been presented with this. So, I want folks in the audience and folks who are paying attention, we're just now getting plugged into what's going on, and we haven't even had a chance to look at these documents. So, it's information gathering right now. If there's anybody who wants to speak, you're more than welcome to. Otherwise, we're going to move on to item number three. All right. Budget overview and presentation.
All right, y'all. So, we're going to get the slide deck queued up. So, being week number two, you know, I just wanted to share some of my philosophy and the same philosophy that you will find in this budget overview today. So, when we think about a recommended budget and we think about the priorities, what you're always going to get from me and from staff are three things. You know, we're going to be focused on what do we need to provide core services, right? We're going to focus on core services. And what do we need to provide those core services at an exceptional level? What do we need to do to take care of our employees? Because our employees are the ones delivering the services that make us an amazing county and community to be a part of. And so, we're going to be focused on that. And then number three is going to be infrastructure. What do we need to be doing to take care of what we have, but also making sure that we're building infrastructure into the future so that we're not having to look back and play catch-up, but that we're planning ahead? So, those are the three areas that we focus on when we develop a budget. And you're going to hear more about that tonight, and Trish is going to dive into that. But I just wanted y'all to know, that's our philosophy, that's what we're focused on. And all those things are things that we focus on before we think about new things. And so, with that, I'm going to kick it off to Trish and Kevin.
Great. Thank you. So, the county manager did a great job giving you all just a high-level overview of the budget. And so, let's just unpack that, if you will. I want to go over the priorities that he just mentioned. There are recommended budget priorities within the FY25 recommended budget. So, you'll see that there is raises for employees. That's a 3.5% merit-based raise. Inflation is coming in over 4%, and we feel that that is a reasonable raise for our employees. The vacancy rates, as you know, have declined, and that's because council has done a great job giving us the tools and resources we need for recruitment and retention. And with that decline of vacancies, we're headed in the right direction, and we certainly don't want to go back. We want to keep that momentum going forward. So, we feel like this is a reasonable raise for employees. We want to ensure the resources, well, we are ensuring in this budget that the resources are there to provide the necessary core services of the county. And you all will see that in the recommended budget. And we're providing for funding for infrastructure. And as you see, council has identified priorities for the recommended budget as well. We've, we have reviewed and listened to what you all have said in open sessions. And so, we have identified those priorities. And along with the infrastructure is the water, how water and sewer is an important priority to council. And so, I'm going to ask Assistant County Manager Mike Moore if he'll just go in a little bit more detail about how this budget is focused on the priority of water and sewer.
Good evening. As you all are aware, water and sewer has grown significantly over the year and a half with the new service territory. With that, we've had some growing pains with backlogs in customer service, responsiveness, and backlogs in repairs. We've addressed that through some pre-qualified vendors, which you all have seen before you over the past few months, or will see in the future. However, this budget year, we intend to address some of these challenges. The biggest thing you'll see are a number of new full-time employees. There'll be 11 we're going to recommend to you all for water and sewer. That's 1.1 million in salaries and benefits and 1.4 in new equipment that's going to support the new employees. And this will grow from 32 employees to 43 employees if all of these are approved.
Mike, can I stop you right there and just ask you, are those, are all of those employees, enterprise employees such that they are funded solely by the funds that are?
Yes, they are.
So, people that have, and this is important because folks don't understand this, people that have a private well and have a private septic system, they don't pay for what you're talking about with these new employees. Is that right?
That's correct. It's water and sewer customers. That's exactly right.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. One of the major changes we're going to recommend to you all is a new department. We would separate this from Public Works, become a standalone department with its own director. And then we would add an operation manager. We already have one manager, and then we would have a second to divvy up the number of employees. We're going to add another maintenance crew. We're going to add a concrete and landscaping crew, because many of you have gotten complaints about, well, they've made the repairs, but my yard's still messed up, or my sidewalk's still torn up. We can get after that more quickly now, because right now, we just, that's all outsourced. And then on the back end of our operation, we'll have an administrative assistant and technical lead. But to kind of, you know, buttress our argument here, we now have 21,000-plus customers. One other thing to note is we believe we're going to be receiving an increase in rates from Rock Hill for our water supply. That's a 5% increase in water and 10% on sewer. So, obviously, we're going to need to pass that along, but we're also going to need to, you know, address the rates to cover these new employees. And to your point, Madam Chair, we're going to ask for, we're going to propose a 5% and 10% rate for our customers.
And so, just, I'm going to stop you right there. So, folks here who are listening can understand, anybody who is serviced by York County, the county is passing along the cost. This is not a cost that the county wanted to approve. It's totally passed on from the City of Rock Hill.
Correct.
Is there any way, and I know that there's a spreadsheet, and we don't have to have it tonight, but I would like to have the spreadsheet of the increases that have been made from the City of Rock Hill that have to be passed along, as well as the amounts that have been transferred to the general fund, made available to the public. Before we have our first reading, I would like to have that spreadsheet.
Yes, we've got that. We'll get that to you.
Thank you, sir.
We also have just a few other notes. Automatic meter system we're implementing, which will allow automated reading, which will cut down on some manpower there, because it'll be automatic gathering of data. Maintenance projects in the Blue Granite, former Blue Granite area totaling 625,000. And then we're currently performing studies on our entire system to look at additional capital improvements, which we, when we propose in the rate increases, we've also taken into account these capital costs downstream. So, pending questions you may have, that's our water and sewer update.
Thank you, sir. Any questions about water and sewer?
Will we get a breakdown of everything he just said?
Absolutely. It'll be in the budget book.
I'd like to see that about the new, you're splitting.
It'll be a new department. Yes, that will be in the budget.
Can we, remind me, when is the council going to actually see the budget book?
We're targeting right now the Wednesday before first reading. Historically, that's been the Friday before first reading. We're making good progress right now.
You need to speak in the mic. When have you been shot, Mr. Madden?
I'm wondering if it's on. I don't see a red light here. We are targeting right now the Wednesday before first reading. Traditionally, as y'all know, that's been the Friday. We hope to move that up a couple days this week, but we are still right now tying out loose ends. We're going to get that to you as soon as we can. And as always, when you get that budget book, y'all can attest, it's a lot of information. Y'all have all got my number. You can call me, you can call Trish, you can call Josh, and we'll walk you through the details. And this is three readings in a public hearing, and the third reading's not until the second meeting in June. So, we're going to try to provide y'all as much time as possible to digest everything. You know, I'll tell you right now, honestly, I'm very proud of this budget. We've got a lot of good stuff in there. We'll touch on a little more details, but just specifically to your question, the Wednesday before the first reading is when we plan to give you all those budget books.
Sooner the better. It's got a lot. Y'all like this. We don't get to see it but once a year, and it takes us a while to digest it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Before we go on, any other questions?
Any other questions?
Okay. So, infrastructure, as council knows, we keep a 10-year capital plan, and we also keep a 10-year capital maintenance plan. So, within the recommended budget, you'll see that we are planning for future items, but we're also maintaining what we already have. And those are multi-year projects, and you've seen those spreadsheets before at past workshops in the last fiscal year and as well some so far this year, where we are just forecasting out those multi-year projects and just analyzing the data and showcasing that in the recommended budget. So, you will see the capital maintenance plan and the capital plan in the recommended budget as well. Also, mental health. Now, four council members have mentioned in open session that mental health, how important mental health is and that that is a priority. So, we took that and we are fully funding that initiative through the Catawba Mental Health through their request through the budget process. Throughout the budget process, they submitted a funding request, and we are fully funding their funding request for mental health.
Is that the $100,000 that Catawba Mental Health has asked for?
Yes, ma'am. So, challenges. So, I've already mentioned that inflation is a little over 4%, and we are, York County is seeing a slowing economy. And I'm going to pass it over to Mr. Madden, and he'll go into more detail of that.
And I think everybody up here is aware of inflation, but I'll tell you, this was the budget that it hit hardest on, particularly in our service contract. Very difficult when you get this budget, you always see a big difference between the requests and the recommended. It was difficult this year making cuts, because a lot of these items just could not be cut, and that's just the effects of inflation we've been hit with. The chart that y'all have before y'all, okay? And this goes back to fiscal year 2004. And these are what I call leading indicators over here. You're looking at the permits and the deed stamps. You can see the first dip, that was the Great Recession. And you can see where we're at right now. The economy is slowing down in York County. And we factored that into the budget. We've taken those down already. But just sort of a heads up to everybody right now, we're going, I know Tommy's going to tell you that it's all rainbow and sunshine out there. It's just awesome. But the economy's, we're going to have to weather a storm here. We're in good position to do that, but I just want to sort of let y'all be aware of that as you go and then review the budget and look what we're trying to do. We're not trying to overreach or anything we're asking for. We're cognizant of the situation we're in. All right. Trish talked about, this is our capital maintenance plan. We developed this in our first budget. It's 10 years in Public Works that maintains this traditionally. A couple years back, we brought in a third-party consultant to go visit all our buildings and make sure we're on top of things. There was very minimal changes, honestly. Public Works has done a great job. These are the list of the items that we're going to be tackling in next budget. I want to point out that last item, county roads. That's the most amount we had ever been put forward to county roads. It's two and a half million dollars that we're going to fund for our county roads. When we get that amount, the first thing we do is offer Public Works. It's literally, how much can y'all handle? Council has invested in road maintenance crews and equipment. We get that, those roads done at about 50 cents on the dollar. They're going to take 700,000 this year. That's equivalent to 1.4 million dollars worth of work. We hope to continue to grow those road maintenance crews, because they pay dividends with the work they do. The rest of that is going to be packaged up and bid out with engineering with other road projects, but that's the most it's ever been. We're very happy about that, and we hope to have a continuous stream of revenue to come in and address our county roads. You see Ebenezer Park up there, those upgrades, I think everybody's aware of. There's another big chunk. We're finishing up that project, added Ebenezer, the library we've maintained. But again, there's a 10-year spreadsheet by building, by facility in the county, where we literally go through every year and we spend quite a bit of time making sure we're not going to have anything blow up on us. And we're a government that looks ahead to make sure we're taking care of what we got and planning for the future as well. This next spreadsheet, and I apologize for the font size on this, but there's a lot of information. We went back to 2019 to sort of show you some of the capital projects we've done to give you some history. You'll look at the 2025 projection and then the items we have identified going forward. The total, if you look at the bottom right, over 140 million dollars. I want to point out, a lot of that's funded through H-Tax. Some of that's funded through state grants right now, McKelvey being one of them. Some of that's funded through state grants right now, McKelvey being one of them over there. General fund surplus. We've got water and sewer as another revenue source. We have accumulated, like we promised back in two thousand seventeen to our taxpayers, we have accumulated our surpluses, and we've set them aside to pay for these projects. The three big projects going on right now, the animal shelter, the Corners Building, and then the expansion at the Booking Center. We've got the funds to pay for those. We're going to write checks and move right along. We're not going to have to issue any debt, borrow any money, no transaction fees, nothing like that. We plan to continue doing that. The parks, and I'll go out, if you go out there in some years, we've talked about this a while, Nanny's Mountain, we have a master plan on Nanny's Mountain. We have a master's plan on Worth Mountain. Right now, council, the council members that represent that district and council as a whole have said, we'll, we'll get to that later when the time's right. We're going to leave it all in the spreadsheet. It's sort of a reminder, and at some point in time, y'all are going to address that. We've got the master plan done. We'll have the funding place to do that. The other two big items are for Catawba Bend. If y'all remember last year's budget workshop, there was a lot of discussion about getting Catawba Bend opened. We bid off seven point three million dollars, which was more than the H tax could fund at that time. If y'all remember, we had a discussion about using some of the general fund surplus that's been set aside to fund that, to get that park open to the public. All of that is moving along very nicely. We hope to have that park open next summer. So, you know, we'll get the park open. And then I think that's an opportunity to take a breath and see how many people are coming out there, and we can then plan for the future. Everybody should remember the master plan that was done up at Catawba Bend, very comprehensive. We hired the best guy in the nation to help work on that. We've got two additional phases coming. I will point out this, those two numbers, those are the original numbers he gave us for that. Those numbers are probably going to be a lot more. But again, we want to make sure we keep those on the spreadsheet so we don't lose track of that. And when we get to the point where council's ready to take the next bite at Catawba Bend, we'll make sure we have adequate funding in place to do that. So.
So I'd like, I'd like to ask a question about the spreadsheet. So we just recently had a workshop about the corner building. And it was represented to us from the folks that are designing that project and moving forward with that, that we really can anticipate that number being a solid number that we can count on in terms of construction. Do we feel that confident about the animal control center? Because we've got sixteen million set aside, but I guess I'd like to hear from you all. Is that, is that an accurate number that can actually reflect?
I'm going to give you a high-level answer, and then Mike's going to give you more detail, okay? That is the amount that council last year told us they were willing to spend on that, basically in a nutshell. And that's the number we're trying to work within. With that said, I'll, that might give you some more detail.
Right. As we had discussed at the Corners, when we discussed the Corners project, that we were going to look at animal control and expansion and renovation on the current site. We have hired an architecture firm to do a schematic at probable cost of what that would look like. We have in mind a number of, the amount we would need shelter-wise to expand to, to address our current and some future growth. We don't know if it's going to be sixty million or not. I'm not confident that it's going to come in at sixty million. It may be lower. It could be higher. But I think we'll have a better idea later this summer, once we get through this process. And I think, just to remind you all, we had originally put in the sixteen for a new facility. And now we've kind of, you know, taken a step back to regroup, and, and so I think we'll have a better number later this year. But for now, it's a placeholder. That's what I would call it.
And then just wanting to connect the dots between this workshop in May. So in May, I think it's May fourteenth, we have another workshop focused on the budget. We're going to have the opportunity for y'all to share any feedback you have related to CIP, right? So are there things that you would want to see on this as a county council that you don't see right now? Maybe in the out years, maybe a little sooner. That conversation we can facilitate at that May workshop. So again, this is information for y'all to kind of digest, think about, and bring, you know, so you're ready for further discussion in May.
If y'all remember, this was normally discussed at the February retreat going through this. We didn't have that this year. But again, this is what we have out there right now. To Josh's point, I'm sure y'all can provide additional feedback on your priorities. With that said, I'm going to touch briefly on the fire budgets right now. Very high level. Y'all have before y'all, those stacks, if you look at the names, it'll say Newport or Leslie. Those are seven special tax district budgets right now. We've got all of them balanced. When I say we, that was really Aaron Siegler and Morse Russell working on that to put those budgets in balance. I think all but one might have come in to us in balance. The millage increases, River View's the only one that has a millage increase, and that's adding additional personnel. Council and staff has always supported that, and we support that again this year.
Can you share with us what the millage increase is for, what the personnel is, personnel request is?
I'm going to, I'll speak at a high level. Mr. Russell, if I've got this wrong, you chime in over here. I believe they're adding a part-time chief and a part-time assistant chief and some additional part-time work at.
So these chiefs are currently not, are volunteers? They're looking to be paid?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. And we've got something similar, you know, at Oakdale going on with that as well. And Bethel, now Bethel says no millage increases. That is true, but if y'all remember last year, they raised their taxes a mill to help finish funding a ladder truck with cash. They've chosen to keep that millage in place, and they're trying to hire more firefighters as well. And this is something we're seeing throughout the county. There's the need for it. Again, management supports this, and council historically has as well. But no real drama in any of those from management's perspective right now, where they're at. But again, I'm sure the fire chiefs will want to talk to that in the future as well to get there and put on that. All right. With that, I'm going to turn it back over to Trish for the summary.
Okay. So in conclusion, I do want to follow up with something that Mr. Madden said. He had mentioned a couple employees or whatnot. And I do want to thank the employees and the finance department. They've done a great job getting this budget to us, to the finance department. They've done a great job putting it together, and we've just really worked as a team. Because as you know, you know, you get those large binders, it takes a lot of work. So I do want to thank staff and all the hard work that they put in to these budgets and for turning them in on time so that we are, we are giving you, as Mr. Madden said, the budget book earlier than you usually receive it. So I want to thank them for the great work. So just in conclusion tonight, just summarize part of the recommended budget. There is no tax increase recommended in the budget that will be before you. There's projected general fund value of a mill increased seven point one percent to one million eight hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. And there's a projected unincorporated value of a mill increased four point eight percent to one million one hundred and thou, excuse me, one million one hundred thousand dollars. And because the county has had continuous positive variances in our actual tax revenue compared to the forecasted value of a mill, management feels more confident in being more aggressive this year in our forecast in the FY twenty-five budget. And then you'll see, I think you've seen throughout today, that when we've presented, that the priorities are addressed. Those are the priorities of council and the core priorities, the core services that we provide to the taxpayers. And that you will see that those are addressed within the FY twenty-five recommended budget that will come before council. So at this time, we're more than happy to take any questions that you all may have. I know this is a lot of information to digest, and the county manager has done a good job just letting you all know that we're coming here today to present this information to you all, to give you time to digest. And I'm available. Mr. Madden, the county manager, Mr. Moore are available at any time in the interim, should you have any questions.
I have a couple of questions. So my understanding from some of the folks that are preparing their budgets for the, for management to consider as they make, as you make your recommendations, was that what was represented to them, was that the increase in the value of the mill, especially with respect to the unincorporated value, was more along the lines of two, three? Has it been communicated that we anticipate four point eight percent so that folks can budget appropriately for that?
Yes, ma'am. I'm not sure what department you might be talking about. I'll sort of give you an overview on the projection, projected value of a mill. When we start the year off, you know, particularly in January, we're looking at collections from December. Both of it comes in through January. We're going to be as conservative as we can with that value of a mill. But as that value of a mill is fine-tuned and adjusted, we do communicate that. Most of that communication is going to be with the sheriff and solicitor's office. Y'all know they prepare their own budgets, and that's key information they need. But I'm not sure of any departments that use, for instance, the unincorporated value of a mill. I do know that, you know, the last piece of the puzzle is usually going to be the special tax districts. Those are a little harder to figure out sometimes. And I always tell them, you know your districts, you know, like, like Oakdale, they're going to know what's going on down there. If it's an annex better than we will. That's the last number that really gets finalized with the value of a mill. But, you know, I've not got any feedback that nobody's got that information in a timely fashion. And I'm not sure what budget adjustment proposed budgets would be driven by, particularly the unincorporated value of a mill.
But just want to make sure that they understand that the increase in the value of mill is projected at four point eight percent. Anybody who's trying to do their budgets, they understand that when they're doing that.
Yes, ma'am.
I will say this. I mean, this has been, this has been a different year. I mean, we all need to recognize that we've had a transition of management at a time where usually we don't have that. We did, we did not have an opportunity to have a strategic planning session. So I know that you guys were operating on maybe some previous conversations about how to deal with that. And as I understood, the previous, the mental health issue is one that's, that's, the hundred thousand dollars is clearly covered by an increase in the value of the mill. So that doesn't impact our budget. But the other two issues, when it comes to infrastructure, and what was the first item?
Infrastructure, you're talking about county council, water and sewer.
Water and sewer. But the water and sewer, isn't all of that funded by enterprise funds?
Yes, ma'am. That is. And I'm going to reiterate.
Even the studies and all of that?
Yes, ma'am. One hundred percent of the water and sewer. And Mr. Moore touched on the fact, we have twenty-one thousand customers right now. That is not the majority of the county, okay? We do hope to expand water and sewer and get in areas where currently not. That's very critical to the future of our county. But if you live in a place where you're paying the city of York for water and sewer, or Clover, or your own well and septic, the water and sewer discussion does not affect you one bit, okay? This is just the people that get a water and sewer bill from York County. And, you know, Chairwoman Cox touched on the fact that a lot of this, we don't have a lot of control of right now. We're given the rate increases by the city of Rock Hill. We try to do the best we can to manage those increases. We're passing along right now with a balanced budget, the five and ten percent increases we receive from the city of Rock Hill. And at the same time, we're, we're taking that, what was a division, and making a department. And York had, I'll give you a real quick anecdote. York had Silver in the City this past weekend. Walked around, talked to a lot of different people. There was a Blue Granite customer, and she was talking about her neighborhood and how happy they've been with the rates decreasing. And it was really nice to hear, and I don't think I've told Mike this, she talked about the service. And the service has gotten much better. You know, we're, we are, as Mike touched on this, we're trying to continue to improve our service right now. There's been for a while a significant backlog on leaks, and we're trying to be proactive about that and address that. The additional staff that's in this budget will help with that. But I do think York County is, is, is moving in the right direction with water and sewer. And that's the one thing I can always tell everybody. All seven council members have made that a priority. And that was definitely in our minds when we threw this budget, when we're looking at water and sewer, to make sure that we're a first-class act on water and sewer.
But just so I'm clear, when, when, when I go back and I take a look at the budget book, the water and sewer, wouldn't it, so that, so I think what you guys identified as the priorities addressed from council, and I understand you were, you're kind of hamstrung because we didn't have a strategic plan. We didn't get a chance to really tell you what are the council priorities for this year. But the water and sewer issue is one that is handled solely by enterprise funds. So that won't, that won't be impacted by the general fund budget.
Correct. Yes, ma'am. And I want to, I want to mention one thing, just to clarify something the listeners of that might have misunderstood. Chairwoman Cox, when you spoke about the transfer of the general fund, you were not talking about our general fund. You were talking about the transfer from Rock Hill's utilities to their general fund, not our general fund. I just want to make sure anybody listening understood that.
No, I'm just trying to, I know that we have an increase in the value of the mill because we live in such a great county. Everybody wants to be here. And we are increasing, and, and we need to be thankful for that. And it's a, it's a blessing and a curse at the same time. How do we deal with that? But when I go back and I look and see how, how you guys have had to identify what the council, identify priorities are, that's been a little, you've had, you've been, you've had, we haven't had our typical strategic plan that we normally do. So the water and sewers shouldn't be impacted by the general fund budget. Mental health is a hundred thousand, which is clearly, you know, something that's, that can be covered. The, the only other one that I'll ask a little bit more detail on is the infrastructure. And, and what do you anticipate that, can you, can you, can you just make sure that I fully understand what you anticipate that being the infrastructure?
Okay. When I think of infrastructure in the county, as I look at a government, you've got to take care of where you're at right now. And what got this started, I think, Ms. Cox, I think you were on council at the time, Michael Johnson got very upset one evening when I think of a boiler had blown up or something, that we had, it was way past its useful life. We had identified it. That sort of, you know, was the impetus to get started on, let's do a ten-year capital maintenance plan. What you're looking at right here, that is the current year, the year, I'm sorry, the year before is fiscal year twenty-five. Those are the projects identifying that. We go out ten years on this plan. And when we look at the fund balance in that plan, we have a minimum balance we want to maintain, and that sort of drives what we bite off in one year. There's a separate millage, two point nine mills, that pays for this fund. The ten million dollars represents some savings we've accumulated over the years. So this is a bigger-than-normal year. And that's what's helped allow us to spend, again, two and a half million dollars on county roads. And if you think about the seven hundred thousand dollars that we're going to do internally, that's really the equivalent of three point two million dollars bidding out of county roads. That's something that staff's very excited about and very happy about. You see Ebenezer Park over there, the upgrades from Ebenezer Parks in there, the Rock Hill Library, that paving equipment for a hundred and five thousand dollars, again, that's to go to our road crews to help us do what we're doing. The HVAC at Fort Ma Magistrate, you've got the Pridgen, you've got DSS, you've got Moss Justice, the Government Center, IT. This is across the board. Every facility we have in the county is in that study. Again, ten years' worth of work out there identified. And this is a separate millage outside of the general fund that pays for this, okay? The next slide, this is our ten-year capital projects. And when you think of this, this is going to be the new things going on in the county. Okay, we're going to build a new Corners Building. Now, we're making, we, we had started off with a new animal shelter, but we're going to expand the animal shelter. But this is your new items over here. And if you look at that third column over the right, where it says fund, and there's some numbers there, and I apologize, you could probably hand out a ledger. General fund surplus, as you're aware, our policies are transfer anything above twenty-five percent. We transfer that to capital projects fund. So it goes from the general fund, if we have a good year, we set that aside and save for our future capital needs. This is the promise that we made to taxpayers in two thousand sixteen. We put forth the plan to pay the debt off. All those fourteen twenties, that's general fund surplus money. That's our savings that we set aside to pay for stuff, okay? We've accumulated a very healthy balance in there. Now, look down at, see the twelve forty-one? That's your convenience centers. We've got some work. We've done the convenience centers, and we've also got some stuff we're possibly looking in the future. Maybe if we, there might be a need to expand somewhere down the future. But that particular fund, again, when you think of these funds, think of them as silos. So we want the convenience centers, just like the landfill or water and sewer, to pay for themselves, okay? Not the general fund. You get down to the next bulk, the next three items, those are the sheriff's, the sheriff's needs. The sheriff has two mills of his budget that goes in the capital projects fund every year, all right? And that's funding his projects that he had identified out there. These are projects the sheriffs identified, counties went and visited and vetted, and we agree with, okay? There's a placeholder for thirty million in the future. That's a future expansion of the detention center. Not sure when that'll happen. But we want to keep it on the radar. The biggest item is going to be the Booking Center right now. Now, you drop down below that, you see Catawba Bend. And you'll see there's two line items. This is what we talked about in last year's budget, if you remember. We're using some of the general fund surplus. A few years back, the plan was to pay for our parks with only H tax. Last year, council agreed to open it up to some of the general fund surplus. That's why that is in, you've got two separate lines over there. Some of that's being paid for at general fund surplus. We're in a very good place right now with H tax revenue. And we have some opportunities that we're going to talk about later. But as you go down that list, you see all the different projects that we've identified and talked about over the years. This is what we would look at in February every year with y'all, and we would update or tweak as needed. As Ms. Cox has pointed out, we didn't have that opportunity this year. We're going to hopefully do that this summer and do a very thorough job to a new level we've never been at before. And I fully do expect to see some things fall out rolling into this. But what we're presenting right now is the best information we have. And, you know, we have planned ahead. We have money to pay for these projects. And we are in a very, very blessed state. You know, we've got good problems around here. And these capital projects, we can pay for these. We can pay for these without issuing debt. We are in a good place. And I, I can't emphasize that enough. And I've talked about that with Josh a little bit, how do you pay for this? How do you pay for that? We've positioned ourselves very well. And, you know, I'm, I'm going to give you an example about something. I'm not saying I would endorse this. But let's say council decides to take that Corners Building, and y'all want to increase it. You want to, you want to build out more office space in there for future growth. If you came to us and said we'd like to do that, we can handle that. We can bite that off, no problem. And I'm not, I'm not certainly encouraging y'all to go do that necessarily or to do more. Or when Mr. Moore gets back about the animal shelter, and that's really the one to think about. If sixteen million doesn't provide the type of animal shelter this county needs or deserves, in your opinion, we can do more. We can. We are in very strong financial shape. We've never been a county that does something unnecessarily. I use the analogy of a Camry all the time. I'm going to start using Accord now. We're in a county like a Honda Accord. We take care of, take care of what we need. We don't try to be a BMW or Lexus or an Acura or something like that. We're a very basic county. We always have been. But if y'all identify critical areas that y'all want to go a little beyond, we can do that. And that's it. And that's, again, we have this, this summer, go through the strategic plan. It'll be a circular conversation. Josh is gonna lead the way in that, and we'll be able to take care of whatever y'all wanna bite off. I'm very confident of that.
So what's the total general fund surplus this year?
Projected for twenty-five, for twenty-four?
Yeah, for this budgeting process.
I, I would be guessing at what I'm, you know, my guess for the fiscal year right now, I'm gonna probably go somewhere between five to ten million dollars. And that's primarily driven by vacancies. We've talked about this every finance operation, meaning vacancies, it's continued to be a problem. We're at a better point, but it's higher than it needs to be right now. Vacancies are a big driver, and we've been very blessed with the growth in the value of the mill as well as interest income. Rates have been high, and we've done very well with this interest income.
Do y'all have any other questions?
Yeah, I'm still wondering on the animal shelter, 'cause when we first started out, it was sixteen mil to do a new animal shelter. And we're gonna retrofit the old, what, I know stuff's went up, but what has caused this?
Tommy, I'm gonna answer that to my best of my ability. Now, it's Mr. Moore to chime in. You touched on it. Prices have gone up significantly. And renovating, renovating a building is oftentimes a lot more expensive than you would imagine. The, the idea, the concept is to add on to that building, get that finished, and then move the animals in there, then renovate the existing building. There's a lot of uncertainties. If y'all remember the last workshop, Mr. Moore talked about this in detail. There's a lot still to be figured out and found out. We've just hired a new designer. So we're gonna learn a lot over the next several months about the animal shelter, and as Mr. Moore committed to at that workshop, when we get information, we will update council in a very timely fashion about that. But, you know, I would just encourage y'all, you know, don't, don't take a stand on sixteen mil. It's gotta be sixteen mil. And I would encourage y'all to look at, what does York County truly need? What do we need in animal shelter? And it might be less. It might be more. But if y'all don't like other councils, are focused on what is our true need, that should really drive what we build. I, I just, I hate the idea of, you know, it's gonna be sixteen mil, and I don't care if we need a twenty-five million dollar facility or a twenty million dollar facility. We're gonna sell ourselves short. I really don't like that perspective look of these projects. We're gonna build what y'all believe we need. That's the bottom line, Tommy. Mike, anything you wanna add to that?
I think you hit it all. Uh, the only thing to add is it became clear that with the new facility, we were gonna far exceed sixteen million by a long shot. And this approach, uh, we at least, uh, already own the real estate, so there's not a real estate acquisition cost. And it's simply a matter of determining how much additional space we need, what additional functionality, working with an architect and coming up with a, a cost estimate to provide you all. We think sixty million's in the ballpark, but again, it's, it's an estimate. It's what we put in as a placeholder, and we're gonna continue to refine that.
Any other questions? Thank you. We appreciate y'all doing that. We obviously appreciate our, our finance staff. They always, always look out to make sure that we're getting the biggest thing for our buck and our penny pension, which is what we like. So thank you so much for what you've done. Um, I don't see anything else on our agenda. Is there anything else we need to cover? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion, we adjourn in a second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, we are adjourned.